201 and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, August 4th, 2024. Okay, with the recording? Okay. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Here.
Ms. Faustic.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Here. We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, September 8th. It is now 7:02 PM and I am calling to order the public hearing for the e-learning plan renewal. Dr. Lee.
Thanks. All right, there we go. Good evening, President Donahue, members of the board, Superintendent Tally. Tonight's public hearing is being held for the three-year renewal as required by the Illinois school code of our e-learning plan. The hearing has met the requirements as mandated by the state of Illinois. Notice of the hearing has been placed in the local newspaper. We've also provided notice to our parents and guardians. We've also provided notice to all staff members who are part of our collective bargaining agreement. And again, we are seeking approval later on during our action items for approval of this three-year learning plan. Again, our e-learning plan, it's important to several things that we like to do tonight, is first define what the e-learning plan, e-learning is. We want to talk through the use of e-learning days and how those are used with the emergency day use. What are the legal requirements regarding an e-learning plan? The process and the plan development? And then finally, next steps and any questions from the board? So, e-learning defined, it's not the, again, taking away snow days as was outlined when we first did this, but it's district-wide days that we allow student instruction to continue in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days. So, the use of e-learning days are several reasons. It continues to build just strength around our school calendar. We are required by Illinois school code to provide extended emergency days at the end of the calendar. The use of the e-learning days can give us some consistency in knowing that we have these days' presence if needed. Allows, again, for that continuity of instruction to continue if there are emergency days that are used. And then, again, very important connections to everything that we're doing with our SCL services for all of our students and how that also relates to our portrait of a graduate instruction. So, in terms of the history, going back to 2013, 2014, this actually shows the use of emergency days. So, if you, if we go back in time just for a minute, B.C., before COVID, it's very important to know that in 2018 to 2019, as a district, the state of Illinois in 2015 had set aside three school districts who could pilot e-learning program, Layden High School District, West Chicago, and Gurnee. And so, following that pilot, districts were able to apply for the use of e-learning days. And we were one of the early adopters with that. And that happened, we planned for that, 2018, 2019, and then this board approved that plan for the 2019 through 2020 school year. Very strategic of the board because we all know what happened in March 2020 of that year. And so, as other districts were scrambling to get learning plans, many districts were formed based on ours because we were one of the early adopters in the state. So, from that, the state then came out with additional school code that said that every three years we must present for approval to our school board and then for approval to the ROE. So, we are in the third time of approval for our e-learning plan for the 2025, 2026 school year, all the way through 2028. So, what are the legal requirements? Some of those I've just outlined. We have to have this plan first approved by this board. Pending board approval, then, we'll make sure that that gets passed on to the ROE. Well, they'll be looking for certain things of the plan. And some of those things are spelled out, that we're making sure that we continue to provide professional development training for all of our staff. This e-learning plan has never been stagnant. It's a very dynamic plan because we know every single school year, as learning continues to evolve, so does the manner in which we deliver that instruction in a remote environment. We want to continue to provide notice to our parents because when e-learning day is called, they are always our partners, but they become our big partners on those days, especially on day one of that plan. We have to make sure that our plan continues to show five hours of instruction. And then, we want to make sure, obviously, that since it is an e-learning plan, that we do provide access and opportunity for all of our students so that they can connect to the plan electronically. So, as I already talked about, the development of that plan, we took a whole year, meeting with various stakeholders within our school district. That included everyone from not just our teachers, but our students. It was really important that we get their input on this. We talked to supporting staff, talked, of course, to our building leaders, and that was, all of that went into the first plan that the school board adopted for the 2019, 2020 school year. So, what does that e-learning look like? Well, if an e-learning day is used for day one, the superintendent would make that decision. And day one would be an asynchronous day. And all of those assignments, we use Google Classroom as sort of our LMS, a learning management system. And then, those assignments are posted and students are able to contact teachers and parents via email during designated office hours. If we have to go to a day two, again, that decision will be made by the superintendent, then the instruction will sync to synchronous. And then, again, there's a set e-learning schedule that's outlined by level, not just for elementary, but for middle and for our high school students. It's also important to know that there is a limit on the number of e-learning days that we have. That limit is five. And so, when we are making that a decision to use an e-learning day, we have to be very strategic about it and making sure that it falls in line with what our procedural guidelines when we're looking at the use of emergency days. Also, it's important to know that election days do count as an e-learning day. And it does count as one of the five from that. So, what are some additional considerations that we take a look at? The use of digital tools. As I mentioned earlier, it's really important that students have access to the e-learning plan. You'll find in our e-learning plan, we've carved out, you know, pretty much an opportunity where we're continuing supporting our students. And what does that support look like? Well, first, I'll start with the number 300. Talking with our chief technology officer, we have 300 hotspots that are available district-wide for the use of our students. And we've had that number and that those are sustained and ready and available. We have never exhausted that number, so we feel confident that that's a good number for our students to have. What we do know is that as we continue to use our and have a greater reliance on our energy grid, that we know that a blackout can happen or a short-term outage. And so, if that happens during an e-learning day, then we have to have a provision in place for our students who may not, no longer have access because maybe they can't create a hotspot on someone's phone or they're just in a situation where their electricity, they can't have that Wi-Fi access. If that's the case, then really it's dependent upon that individual teacher to make those arrangements. What would that look like? They're not going to be able to go up to the school, of course, because obviously we've called that day because it's an emergency day for weather. More than likely, it's going to be something that the teacher will be following up with them the next day or an email that may occurs later at the end of the day to let the teacher know, hey, I wasn't able to access during this time. And the teacher might provide an alternative assignment, whether it be physical, that they're able to take home the very next day, or something electronic. But the key there is that one-to-one relationship between the educator and the student with parent support to make sure that that student is not falling behind just because of a power outage on an e-learning day. So, what are our next steps? We'll be, I'm asking the board to approve the e-learning program for a three-year renewal tonight. From this pending board approval, we'll forward this on to the ROE. We'll continue to communicate this e-learning plan to all of our stakeholders, including staff, students, and parents. And then, we'll continue to provide layers of professional development, ongoing, not just this year, but over the three years. And so, for that, that's where we're at.
So, we have no public comment on this portion of the meeting. I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for Dr. Lee? Does anyone have, I'm not going to call people. Any question? Okay.
I'll still be back.
You're good now.
All right, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Demme. Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Faustic.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, we have two board salutes tonight. Ms. Gents.
Kiwanis Key Club Scholarship Awards. The board salutes four District 204 graduates who received Key Club Scholarship Awards from the Kiwanis Club of Naperville. The recipients are Sai Munadar, Mutialla from Matia Valley, and Pranali Thakkar, Sammy Badshah, and Wing Yu Ying from Wobonzi Valley. The scholarships were funded through generous donations from the Kiwanis Club of Naperville. The scholarship recipients were recognized for their volunteer leadership and community service as members of the Kiwanis Key Club, as well as their academic achievements. Congratulations to all involved.
Mr. Rising.
Distinguished Young Women of Illinois State Finalists. The board salutes Wobonzi Valley High School seniors, Daphne Archro Kalar and Juliana Filippa for being named state finalists in the Distinguished Young Women of Illinois Program. Selected among the top 22 senior girls across the state of Illinois, they excelled in scholastics, public speaking, talent, fitness, and interviews. We wish them all the best at the state showcase on August 10th at Carl Sandberg High School Performing Arts Center in Orland Park. Congratulations, Daphne and Juliana.
Let's give a hand for all of those accomplishments. Okay. It is now time for public comment. 60 minutes is allowed and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So, we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools or are in our schools. We have three public speakers tonight. The first is Ashala Nagashawara.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashalina Grishra and I am a rising junior at Matia Valley High School. I'm here because I deeply care about something that affects every student in our district, the future of our environment. District 204 is known for its academic excellence, strong leadership, and rich resources. But with all we have achieved, we are still missing a clear carbon action plan. This not only acknowledges how climate action affects our environment, but also our health and education. This isn't just a global issue, it's a local one. According to National Education Association, climate change is already affecting students' abilities to learn due to extreme weather and air quality issues. And the EPA reports that poor indoor air quality, often tied to outdated systems, can decrease student performances and increase student absenteeism. Now, this is a real problem. But one concern that is always brought up is money. Will sustainability be well within our budget? Now, this is a common misconception that's not only wrong, but dangerous. Our inability to see the truth stunts our ability to make changes. Study after study shows that sustainability saves money. A 2020 report by the U.S. Green Building Council found that green schools uses 33% less energy and 32% less water than traditional schools. Over time, those savings could directly go back to students, better facilities, more resources, and healthier spaces for learning. Even small changes matter. Conducting audits, upgrading insulation, and incorporating solar panels are steps other districts are already taking. In Illinois alone, districts like 203 have adapted sustainability frameworks. This includes renewable energy and green building practices without cutting corners elsewhere. We have always said that we are preparing students to be leaders of tomorrow, but what about today? Leadership starts now with us. Let's lead by example. Let's show that in District 204, the future of our students includes our planet.
Thank you. Second speaker is Ayana Mukherjee. Oh. Okay. And the third one is Jack Ma.
Good evening, President Donahue, Superintendent Tally, and members of the board. My name is Jack Ma and I'm a rising senior at Nikwa Valley High School. I want to thank you for everything you have done to make our schools a place where students are not just taught, but truly prepared for the future. And I want to thank you for your leadership and for listening to student voices. And in the creation of the strategic plan where you state that students should embrace their role and responsibilities within their community and world. I am here today to embrace that responsibility. I am asking the board to speak out against the Illinois Municipal Electricity Agency or the IMEA's proposed $2 billion, no, $2 billion, 10-plus-20-year contract extension with the city of Naperville. This will not only affect a community, but will affect the entire electricity utility costs for District 204. The strategic plan says clearly that you aim to optimize resources and operations and that facilities should be properly maintained and support the environment. But accepting the predominantly coal-based energy from IMEA until 2055 would go against everything we stand for. I find many issues with the IMEA rushing this contract. Firstly, this contract is acting in opposition to the principles and values held by this district. Secondly, this contract is attempting to rush Naperville into a non-competitive, into rushing Naperville, the city of Naperville, into accepting this contract without competitive bids, which violates Naperville Municipal Code 19B4. Thirdly, this also has additional issues with state legislation with the Clean and Actible Jobs Act, which means the Prairie State Coal Plant will be reducing its operation by 2038 and has to shut down by 2045. These issues that we find now are also reflected with how much we're going to be paying in electricity. Because in the past, when Prairie State was being created, the cost overruns exceeded 1.6 billion, and that led to higher electricity costs for our people in Naperville as well as this district. If we were to move on and accept this contract, we believe that the district of Naperville, past performances does not dictate future results. What IMEA wants to claim is that if we accept this contract, we're going to have cheap and stable energy. But their energy is going to be slowly reduced by state legislation, and that's a big issue. And as we've seen in the past, when IMEA is trying to transition and move somewhere, it costs a lot of money and there's often cost overruns that will be reflected back in your utility bills. And that is a reasonable issue that we face. If we stay silent.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we move to our consent agenda items and superintendent report. We'll start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. Tonight, I start my comments with sad news. Ms. Nancy Young, an educator for whom Nancy Young Elementary School was named, passed away on July 15th. Ms. Young began her work with Indian Prairie School District as a media specialist at Wobonzi in 1975. In 1981, she became the Learning Center Director at Hill Middle School. And from that position, she opened the Media Center at the New Gregory Middle School. She retired in 1994 from Indian Prairie. She made an impact on how media centers were seen and used in our schools. We send our condolences to her family and may they know what an impact Nancy had on our school system. I ask that we take a moment of silence in remembrance of Ms. Nancy Young. Thank you. As this is the last meeting before we officially begin school, I want to share some information. As we begin the 25-26 school year, Indian Prairie School District is proud to continually to offer no-cost mental health supports through the Indian Prairie CARES Community Advocacy, Resilience, Engagement, and Support After-School Program. This homegrown, equity-centered initiative provides vital mental health services directly in our schools. Since its launch three years ago, the CARES program has delivered over 5,000 free sessions within Indian Prairie and more than 13,000 sessions across 20 partnering school districts that have franchised our program model. This year, five CARES after-school clinic sites will operate across the district one day per week, after-school hours at Matia Valley, Nikwa Valley, Granger Middle, Georgetown Elementary, and Longwood Elementary Schools. Information about how to access these clinics may be learned from the social workers or professional school counselors at your schools. We have been very busy this summer with construction projects across the district. I have tried to note some of these projects through my Twitter X account, showing the progress of these projects. Work has included replacing the floors at 12 schools, creating secured vestibules at 11 of our schools, starting work on the auditorium at Wobonzi Valley, redoing some classes at Nikwa, paving at several schools and replacing HVAC systems at some. At a Board of Ed presentation in September, we will be able to share more of what has been done this summer. Our HR, our human resources team and principals have been busy as well. I'm able to say that almost all general education positions have been filled, meaning all students should have their teachers in place unless someone is out for medical reason or something else. We've done a great job in hiring teaching assistants, however, we still need more. Additionally, lunchroom assistants are also needed. Please check our website for any positions. First Student was awarded, I'm sorry, First Student awarded Naperville the National Transportation Location of the Year Award. This award is a national award given to the location providing superior service, reliability, and safety to their clients. As we are the Naperville location, this award goes to our bus service. Additionally, Ms. Linda Andrus was awarded the Regional Location Manager of the Year Award. This award is given to location managers that demonstrate exemplary leadership and professionalism to the location, staff, drivers, and clients served. And she is one of our managers, our regional manager. Both of these awards are recognized nationally and show the true operational partnership we have with First Student to provide safe and reliable transportation service to the Indian Prairie 204 students. We are very proud of our relationship with First Student. It's a strong partnership that continues to go over time. And tomorrow, I'll be speaking to all of our bus drivers and attendants at the welcome-back ceremony for them. I'll now turn the meeting back over to Ms. Donahue.
All right. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for approval of consent agenda items D through N.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through N.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Faustic.
Yes.
The motion passes. I need a motion to approve the e-learning plan renewal as presented. Motion and second.
I move that the Board of Education approve the e-learning plan renewal as presented. I second.
Okay, get another opportunity to ask Dr. Lee questions.
Different angle.
Maybe somebody will think of something. I mean, I am thankful for efforts to renew this. I think it's a good option for our district. And as you said, it doesn't take away snow days. But it gives us more options for protecting our calendar and not having to go into the summer and things, so. Okay. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Faustic.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Mr. Matt Shipley regarding the 2025-26 tentative budget.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, we are presenting the 25-26 tentative budget. No action is required by the board this evening, but this is a required presentation by the state statute before we do bring the budget to you for approval at the September 8th Board of Education meeting. By law, we're required to pass a budget within 90 days of the beginning of the fiscal year, so roughly September 30th. We're required to do this presentation of at least 30 days prior to that approval. So, how the calendar works out is that we're in front of you tonight to present this as a discussion item. And we'll be bringing it forward again for your approval on September 8th. Tonight's presentation is in line with Board Policy 4.10. It's strategic plan priority number four. And some of the concepts we'll be discussing tonight will be refreshers from prior presentations that will also tie to Vision 2030 Priority Number Four. So, first, I will start with a brief summary of the prior presentations. Again, this is the first, the third time I've been in front of the board to discuss the 25-26 budget and sort of our financial conditions. So, most of this information is materially consistent while we presented before. So, I'm optimistic I get the same number of questions Dr. Lee just got. And we can maybe get out while there's still some sunlight. We'll move on to just a summary of our budget initiative. So, before we start looking at some numbers and charts and graphs, just really want to talk through what some of the key priorities were for our administrative team, for our building leadership as we built and really worked through this year's budget. We'll then transition into talking about some specifics about our operating We'll then transition into talking about some specifics about our operating budget. We'll talk about our non-operating budgets and then we will, there will be time for next steps and then just a question-answer session as well. So again, just to kind of briefly cover our prior presentations, we presented a five-year forecast in both February and May for the board. These forecasts were balanced, but it, it required some reductions from our current trend in order to balance that and that, that did mean some staffing reductions are present, were presented in those, those forecasts. That includes some staffing reductions that are included in tonight's budget for the 25-26 year. It also includes about 10 to 12 reductions that we're projecting for fiscal year 27 as well. We spent a decent amount of time in, in both presentations talking about some, some opportunities to use some one-time funds to further support our educational program. And in May, we recommended supporting technology needs with a one-time fund balance transfer to capital and that is included in tonight's budget and I will show how that affects both the operating and non-operating funds as we work through this presentation. Did want to reiterate in both presentations and we'll continue to cover it again tonight that our tax rate, our property tax rate is the lowest it's been in over 10 years. That's due to a strong housing market, a strong property market nationally, but, but really even exceeding the trends here in the, in the Naperville and Aurora area. So we are seeing that continued strong demand and that does lead to a lower tax rate. With that said, the dollar amount of those taxes do increase each year tied roughly to the Consumer Price Index. Spent a lot of time specifically in February talking about some state and federal funding challenges and how that's impacted our long-term projections. So we'll cover that again in a little bit more detail tonight specifically on how that's impacting our plans going into the, the next year. And then finally, our non-operating budget does reflect the impact of the successful Safer Stronger 204 referendum. The first bonds, first two issues actually of those bonds have now been issued without a tax rate increase, so we've been able to issue those bonds consistent with the promise we made to the community back in November. So moving on to our budget priorities, our first priority is to adopt a sustainable and transparent budget. So tonight's budget is a balanced operating budget that maintains necessary operating reserves to ensure the stability of the district. We project to receive the recognition status from the State Board of Education. This is the highest financial status the State, State Board of Education awards. And I just want to highlight, you know, again, just, just some real highlights, if you will, of the transparent and accountable process that we believe we, we run through the, through the budget. I'll, I'll reiterate, the budget is really a year-long process as well, so a lot of these things occur on a regular basis for both the board and the community and our administration to really demonstrate transparency and accountability. But we are compliant with all hearing and posting requirements. That includes tonight's presentation as well as the adoption that's proposed for September. We are subject to annual financial and compliance audits and again, we, we've passed all those audits with, with, you know, really a clean, a clean bill of financial health. We are current with all our regulatory filings now that we are active in the bond market. We're required to post regulatory filings similar to what a publicly traded company would do and we, we are up to date and, and you could find those through, through the Emma database if any community member is interested in seeing those filings. We've maintained two strong bond ratings with a AA+ bond rating from Moody's as well as a AAA bond rating from S&amp;P, so this reflects not just the financial position of the district but also the governance and management of the district as well. We're one of just 26 school districts in the state of Illinois to obtain that AAA rating. And again, now that we're issuing debt, that's not just a sign of our financial stability, but it does save the district and the taxpayers money in the long run because we're able to issue these bonds at a lower interest rate than we otherwise would be able to. As we, we talk through our, our sustainable and transparent budget, I do just want to highlight that we continue to deliver high-quality services at a cost per pupil that is well below the state average and also is the lowest of our eight peer districts. So you could see here, Indian Prairie's cost per pupil is, is roughly about $16,500. Again, that compares to a state average right at $20,000 and again, the lowest of our eight peer districts. Our peer districts are the highest performing unit districts in the state. We are competing and comparing ourselves to the best districts in the state and we are, you know, our student performance is on par with those districts while spending significantly less money per pupil. One thing that's interesting about this chart, not, you know, Indian Prairie's always been below the state average. I think as long as the district has, has been around all 50 years, I'd, I'd like to strike a bet we've been below that for, for at least 49 of those 50 years. But one thing that's interesting that, that's changed a little bit is that you'll see most of our peer districts are now falling below the state average as well, so that state average has really climbed up in recent years. That is, that is kind of one of the consequences or benefits of evidence-based funding is that we've seen a lot of districts, a lot of districts throughout the state kind of catch up to where some of the, the higher performing districts have been from a funding standpoint, but it, it really hasn't raised much more than the floor. So we're kind of seeing the floor raise from evidence-based funding, but as a district that, that's a tier-two district, I always like to say we're kind of stuck in the middle. We're not receiving that additional state money on an annual basis, but we also don't have the, the local property tax base or the property tax wealth that many of our peer districts have. And so, so here we are kind of sitting in, in year nine of evidence-based funding, kind of patiently waiting our turn for, for some of those significant influx of state dollars. Moving on to budget priority two, you know, we want to ensure programming stability while managing in an uncertain revenue environment. So I, I've spent about 25 years working in municipal and K-12 finance and I'll say the, the one thing that's kind of been predictable that whole time has been the unpredictability of, of revenue at the, the state and federal level. I think this, this round of it, if you will, is a little unique in that there are forces, primarily at the federal level, probably exclusively at the federal level, that, you know, have opinions that, that actively want to, to reduce funding to, to K-12 or significantly change that model, even if the funding amount remains the same. And I think that's a little different. There's always been a concern about the ability or availability for state and federal to, to pay. I think this is the first time we're in an environment where, where we're really questioning the will or the, the political desire to fund K-12 education. And so with that said, I think it, it does require a little bit different approach than maybe we've taken during, during prior financial challenges. So first, we're ma, we're ensuring that we continue to maintain operating reserves to provide stability in case of further funding freezes or delays. So again, it's not just, it's not just the elimination of funding that can be harmful, but it can also be the delay of funding. That adds unpredictability. It, it could put us in a position where we have to, to decide whether or not we're going to fund a program. I, I've seen some headlines in the last week or two where districts are reducing some of their after-school supports or some of their intervention programs because they're not sure if the federal funding that supports that's going to be there. So that's why it's critical that we maintain those operating reserves so we can fund them even if the funding's delayed three months, six months, or a year. We do continue to actively manage our grants. We're ensuring compliance and that the funding is reaching the intended student populations. Again, there are concerns coming out of the federal level that maybe some of these grants aren't being used for their, their intended students and I want to ensure the board that our administration takes that grant compliance work very seriously. I also want to credit our sort of grant, grant specialist Tara Bell, who does a lot of good work, both managing sort of our entitlement grants but also pursuing competitive grants as well, so that hopefully as, as we have some funding challenges on the entitlement side, we can hopefully start to fill some of those holes by, by receiving some different competitive grants or, or some unique funding opportunities. And so with that said, we do intend to fund all current scheduled programming and that's, that's represented in tonight's, tonight's budget, even if the state or federal revenues are further modified. The third, third priority, which again I alluded to earlier, is that investment in classroom technology and technology infrastructure. So the reality is that with, with some tighter operating budgets, both, both this year and in the future, what our operating budget was making available for technology was not sufficient to, to allow our technology team to really keep up with their needs. And again, that, that's both classroom technology as well as the infrastructure that, that supports our technology, whether that's switches, Wi-Fi hotspots, ensuring that the safety and security of our network. These are all things that, that realistically, we were not in a position to fund out of the operating budget without further reductions to programming. And so we recommend, we are recommending this evening a one-time transfer to support these district technology needs into a capital fund. This will give our technology team about, about three years worth of funds that then they can, can get caught up on some deferred needs and really put our district in a good, good place moving forward to ensure that that annual allotment that's coming from operations is sufficient to support, to support the technology needs throughout the district. Final, our final priority then is our capital investment. So we are anticipating spending $50 million of referendum funds in this current fiscal year. So a reminder that when we are approving this budget, this is, this is on a July 1 to June 30th basis, which sometimes doesn't necessarily line up with projects, especially projects we're doing over the summer or, or, you know, multi-year projects. But this is, this is all $50 million worth of referendum funds for the, this, this 12-month period we're approving tonight. We'll continue to update the board on our, on our progress with our capital investment side through our Safer Stronger 204 website as well as our, our update in September. And as you know, we also presented in June about some of our really exciting plans for Nikwa, Lubanzi, and Burkett that will get started this fiscal year as well. We're sort of rotating through a handful of images that are, to kind of show the in-progress work as we speak and you'll, you'll see, you know, we're really excited about, about the work we've done this summer, whether that's the Lubanzi Auditorium work, improving the safety and security throughout our elementary schools with the installation of 11 secure vestibules, continue to do, do flooring upgrades, and, and also highlight a lot of focus on energy efficiency and working through some LED lighting projects as well. So with that, we'll, we will start looking at the, the budget and looking at some numbers. Just a brief overview of, of what we mean when we talk about our operating funds. The district maintains six operating funds. That includes education, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF and Social Security, a working cash and a TORT fund. This fund and is set out by the State Board of Education and so we are maintaining compliance with State Board requirements by maintaining these six separate funds. And the real focus of these funds and the focus of our discussion is going to be the day-to-day operations of the district, so the, both the revenues that, that support day-to-day operations as well as the expenses that come with it. This does not have a direct impact on our Safer Stronger 204 referendum. So just showing how the operating budget looks in that, in that form, again, in a form that's, that's kind of standard across the state for all 800-plus school districts. You'll see a lot of numbers, but I just want to hi, focus on the two that are circled in red. So across all six funds, we are projecting in excess of just short of $211,000. So that is a balanced budget on just over $455 million of revenue. This will, the next line, you will see that $12.1 million transfer, so that's a transfer of fund balance, so it's not necessarily hitting our expenses or revenues, but it's, it's a reduction of that fund balance or reserve number. Again, a one-time reduction that's shown here. And then that would leave us with an estimated fund balance of just, of 156.6 million or roughly 34.5% of revenue. So when we presented to the board, started talking about this concept in February, this, this fund balance transfer, we were, without the transfer, we were projecting a fund balance of about 39%. So this is kind of the first step to get that fund balance more in line with the 25% amount that's listed in our board policy. Again, we still believe that the 25% is an appropriate amount. We do, as we've already reiterated several times, this evening administration is very concerned about maintaining operating reserves in any environment, but especially in the environment we're in now. We do believe this still leaves us sufficient fund balance to, to do that. Again, I think this is a, this is a pie chart that hasn't changed much over the past, you know, really 20-plus years. I think the only thing that's happened is that that property tax chunk of the, the pie chart continues to, to grow ever larger. So this continues to show the property taxes are over three-fourths of our revenue source. It is a stable source of revenues, but again, it does, it does put pressure, some pressure on our, our local tax base, just as a result of being so, so highly funded by property taxes. The state and federal revenues that are in, in tonight's budget do reflect the most recent information that's been approved at the federal and state level. As of tonight, there's no frozen funds, there's no embargoed funds, there's no reductions we're aware of coming out of the federal and state level, but again, it's been, been a little bit of an unpredictable environment. As of a week or two ago, we did have about $600,000 worth of grants that were temporarily frozen at the federal level, but as of tonight, all, all federal money has been unfrozen and again, is, is reflected in tonight's budget. Again, as, as discussed, we, we do continue to lower that property tax rate and so our 2026 budget does project that consistent tax rate and an operating increase consistent with inflation. So based on tonight's budget, we will be bringing a property tax levy for discussion in November and approval in December that would recommend an, an increase in line with inflation. Again, what this, this chart shows and again, our commitment to our taxpayers, the Safer Stronger 204 proposal resulted in no tax rate increase. And then just a final point that I think we, we talked to, talk about and, and I do want to reiterate any chance we get, it, it is critical that we continue to work to, to grow our commercial industrial tax base. I know administration, myself and Dr. Tally both, both have good relationships with both the cities of Naperville and Aurora. We do have a seat on the Naperville Development Partnership, but I, I just want to continue to reiterate that because that, that's what's going to be critical to keep this number at where it is now. We've, we've had a lot of, lot of good progress with our tax rate, but we have to ensure that we don't continue to see that, that burden kind of creep back to taxpayers or that rate start creeping back up due to a lack of investment in our commercial industrial So moving on to expenses, tonight's budget does include all known contracts obligations and reflects our most recent agreements with both our unions and all our significant suppliers. As you could see, and, and again, something that hasn't changed much between years, we are a people business. Over three-fourths of our projected budget is related to salaries and benefits and I'll recognize that that purchase services number of 15%, that includes a lot of people as well who are interacting with our students on a daily basis because we do have an outsourced model. That purchase services includes our bus drivers, our food service workers, and our custodial staff. So when you include all those, we, we do get to almost 90% of our funding, our spending being directly related to people. Some significant increases that, that we are budgeting for compared to the prior year. Again, one that, one that's kind of been a, a frequent flyer on this list has been our transportation costs. Continue to see challenges in that environment. We, we think we're kind of at the end of the tunnel and, and optimistic this is sort of our last increase above Consumer Price Index associated with transportation, but we are budgeting an 8% increase for this year. Health insurance has also seen a, a significant increase. We are, we, we've had some good discussions with, through our insurance committee about, about trying to work to, to minimize that impact in, in the future, but for this year, we are projecting a 6% increase on health insurance. Electricity, we're, we're budgeting a 23% increase for electricity next year, so that's about a $1 million increase. And so, you know, again, a total budget for electricity is about $4 million, budgeting it for $5 million next year. Maybe not the largest line item, but I, I just want to talk through that, that percentage increase a little bit. First of all, there, there's kind of interest, a lot of interesting things going on in both sides of town, both the Aurora and Naperville side when it comes to electricity, so you may have heard some about that or, or read about it. The focus of this increase is really on the ComEd side, where starting in June 1, ComEd bills went up about 20% due to what's known as a demand capacity charge. So I, I think we've, we've shared with the board in the past that we, as a large user, are able to negotiate directly with our energy suppliers. We have, as practice, tried to lock in, you know, four or five-year contracts when rates seem pretty favorable to ensure kind of price stability. And so right now, we're paying about 10% less than the going rate for energy supply. The problem is we don't have any control over transmission charges, so what ComEd charges us to physically bring the electricity to the district and we don't have any control over this demand capacity charge, which increased over 800% in June. And so, you know, the, the reality is that we're budgeting a 23% increase. It's also why part of our capital plan really, really focused on energy efficiency and specifically the LED lighting work and we further focus that on work in that ComEd territory. So our, our large schools, Matia Valley, our, our middle schools, Granger, for example, our, our middle schools in Aurora, that was really our first focus in that LED lighting and it did almost feel like we were in a race against time to kind of get those lights up and in before those, those rates increase. So we're optimistic that, that we won't need this full increase, that the, the savings for those lights will be recognized and then our hope is that whatever budget surplus is left over, we can then kind of turn that into a revolving fund that, that reinvests in other energy, energy efficiency projects. So we have about $20 million in the Safer Stronger 204 initiative that's budgeted that's budgeted exclusively for energy efficiency. And again, with LED lighting being the first project we're tackling. But then hopefully, we can kind of create some operating fund surplus here, you know, this year and potentially ongoing, that can continue to layer in additional projects as well. And then finally, we had a five percent increase for out-of-district tuition. This does kind of reflect our, our recent experience with, with this line item. I, you know, I think as the board knows, our philosophy within special education is we want all students in the most inclusive, least restrictive environment as possible. And so this is, this is not our first, second, or even third choice for, for many of our students. But the reality is we, we do have some unique situations that, that's really driving this increase from prior years. That includes students or families that are moving into the district, where this is their, their, this is how they're being serviced already. And so we kind of inherit that out-of-district, that out-of-district designation, and then, you know, kind of have to work through, through Indian Prairie, the Indian Prairie process to try and, try and bring them back to, to District 204. So again, hoping that, that this budget increases is sufficient to cover any excess costs. We are actively working to manage that, and that's not our first choice for any student, but that is a budgetary reality going into this year. Just wanted to show what the total staffing plan looks like. That's again incorporated in that budget. So if you think about, we showed a, a pie chart that shows, you know, over three-fourths of the revenue going to our staffing. This would be a, a pie chart of that pie chart. We're showing a, a total target FTE for thirty-two-hundred-three, thirty-three-point-five employees. So FTE stands for Full-Time Equivalence. This does represent about a ten-and-a-half FTE reduction from the prior year. And again, that, that's been communicated with the board, that that's, that's primarily tied to just trying to, to step down or have a gradual reduction of, of force coming from the, the loss of our SIR funding. You know, I'll point out, when you, when you look at the largest share here, this is licensed teachers representing about two-thirds of our, of our employees. Teaching assistants represent another twenty-two percent of that, and nurse, nursing and other health-related services represent about three percent of that. So over ninety percent of our employees are interacting with our students on a regular basis as part of their job description. Less than ten percent of our employees are providing administrative or other support services. We continue to have one of the highest pupil-to-administrator ratios in the state. So that does reflect that we are putting the most amount of staff possible directly in front of our students on a daily basis. Moving on to our non-operating funds, we do have two non-operating funds maintained by the district, which are our Capital and Debt Service Fund. And unlike the operating, which is focused on day-to-day and maybe the, the short-term, one-year period, these really have a long-term focus, focusing on district facilities, and then the repayment of any debt-related financing. As you know, there's very limited recurring revenue available for capital investment. And I do want to ensure the board that we are monitoring our Safer Stronger referendum dollars, again, in line with all IRS and SEC requirements. Starting this evening, as part of the financial package that was approved in consent, you received an additional report which shows specifically how those funds have been spent down, and, and that ensures compliance, again, with, with various IRS requirements. And then, again, we talked about the operating impact of the transfer we're recommending. We'll show here in a second how the local capital funds will, will be impacted by those technology upgrades. And so again, this is our Capital Projects Fund, broken out between the, the local funds, which are now going to be designated for technology for the next couple of years, as well as those referendum funds. You'll see that, the, the technology, that twelve-point-one, that was a transfer out of the education fund, is shown as a transfer in here. We're projecting our technology team has about three-point-four million dollars of projects of that twelve earmarked for this year, and then the remaining balance will carry forward to next year. Within the referendum funds, the bond issuances shown here have already been issued. Funds were received on July fifteenth, and those funds are now available to, to fund our projects. Again, what, what's shown here is, is that June, July one to June thirtieth view. And so that includes projects that, that have been ongoing for, for the last couple of months, including some, some bills that were approved this evening, as well as the work that we're beginning in the spring of 2026, most significantly the work at Niqua and Wabansy. That, that service fund, or how we're going to repay those, those bond issuances, is shown here. Again, the budget includes all scheduled principal and interest payments for all outstanding bonds, again, including both the twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five issuances, which have occurred recently post-referendum. Just an important point, again, something we try to reiterate every time, these are known fixed-rate interest payments. So when we issue bonds, we issue them at a fixed rate so that we provide predictability and stability to the district and the taxpayer. The bond and interest rate, it will be below the referendum commitment of thirty-seven cents. So the actual rate for 2024 was just over thirty-three cents, and we're projecting a, a rate just under thirty-five cents for the 2025 rate. So again, we've managed to, to issue a significant amount of, of bonds so far. We're doing some really great work in the district, and got some really exciting plans, and we are doing it without a tax rate increase. So with that, the tentative budget is now available for review at the ipsd.org/businessoffice website. As mentioned earlier, we have a budget hearing scheduled for the September eighth Board of Education meeting. We will also be presenting a, a building operations and capital projects update on September eighth. So we'll get to dive a little bit deeper into that non-operating budget and those referendum funds. Again, do want to reiterate from the last time we spoke in, in June, we've continued to update that Safer Stronger 204 website. It does now include, include budgets that are being updated regularly for the significant projects, as well as, you know, images and, and videos, and really, again, some of the, some of the more fun stuff associated with, with all this great work. And then, again, the, the biggest revenue source, again, continues to be property taxes. Our property tax levy hearing is scheduled for December of 2025. And again, I'll just reiterate that the, the levy we are, that, that would be tied to this budget would include a increase tied to the Consumer Price Index for next year. And so with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Dumming?
Thank you, Matt, as always, for providing us with update. And, you know, there are a couple of things that I just wanted to really acknowledge the work that we do. And one is, first of all, you, you know, chatted a little bit about being a little bit different as far as some, some of the things that we are experiencing this year. And so thank you for keeping abreast of what's happening from a federal level perspective and how that impacts us. And especially because I can envision, just as you indicated, there was something last week or week before last, and that's changed already this week. You know, thankfully, we're seeing those funds come in. But certainly, it means that you have to make adjustments sometimes when you've already planned things. So thanks for staying abreast of that. And then the other thing that I just, one of the things that I really wanted to highlight again, reiterate for the public, and you talked about it on slide four, but just the impact, positive impact, that the strong ratings that we receive from Moody's and S&amp;P, and the impact that that has on how we are able to access funds and being able to look at ways to save, make sure that we're paying attention to, you know, to, to being financially conscious for the district. Sometimes we don't, we receive those ratings so often, sometimes we just take it for granted. But now that we are really going back to issue bonds, it really makes a difference. So thank you for the work that you and your team do to continue to make sure that we are strong financially. Slide six, you talked a little bit about intervention challenges that could potentially... I, I think we've been fortunate, but there was, I think that we had one that we had had a program that we had to look at making a little change on for some of our students as we were looking at being able to provide opportunities. You mentioned it a couple of months ago, but it was one where we had looked at for students in helping make when interventions during, as far as helping students make choices, when...
Oh, yes. It's our, our reset program.
Yes, yes. So right now, is that the only one that we've, that we've... Okay.
Yeah, the reset program, we were using, we had used SIR funds at one point in time, and then, but that was the position that we did have to cut.
Okay, but that's the only one, okay. That's the, those are the comments that I just had, and just wanted to re- confirm that one. Thank you.
Ms. Fazdak?
I want to echo first what Susan said about the ratings. You've continued to keep us in a really good position based on your diligent and organized leadership of our budget. So thank you for that. And thank you also for the reassurance that, in the face of potential federal and state funding cuts, that we still intend to fund everything, and that you have continued to keep a balanced budget so that we have the option to do that for our students. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Rising?
If you'd go to slide five. I just wanted to kind of point something out. So this is the one where you had the operating expenditures per pupil and showed how we're the lowest of our comparable unit district, high-performing unit districts. You know, I, I just want to make the clarification, because sometimes people maybe aren't entrenched in this like we are, is that us spending the least amount isn't by choice. And you kind of, you had mentioned that a little bit, but I, I just wanted to reiterate that. That is no choice of ours, it is because what our property tax base is, that we are only allowed, because that's the money we have, to, to be able to spend towards our students. So it isn't something that we're trying to stay low, although we are very proud of that, because we're as high-achieving, if not higher than every single one of these districts academic-wise. But we are forced to spend as low as we, as low as we do because of our property tax base. And I know everybody's property taxes are high, I get that. But, you know, that's the amount of money that we have that forces us to spend as low as, as we do. And as measured by the state, our adequate funding that we get is lower than every single one of those districts as well. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, Matt, if that was okay. Slide eleven. You know, I, I remember something at the, you gave us a, one of your four updates, the one on May fifth, when you talked about the, and I guess this would be the state other, I think, but maybe you can clarify. When you talked about the proration of the mandated categoricals, what really shocked me from that is that the reimbursement rate that we will get from the state for regular and special ed transportation are lowest they've been in fifteen years, if not longer. That's just the data you gave us is the last fifteen years. And then private tuition is, is the lowest it's been in like ten years. And if you could just speak to that, because I think that also plays into less than money that we need to find elsewhere and accommodate for. And is that, that state other, just?
That, that is correct. So as shown here, evidence-based funding, it, it is the largest part of that, that, that state contribution. But the, the overwhelming majority, I'd say, of that other category is those categorical payments. And I think, just to kind of, kind of tie it to some of the expense things you mentioned earlier, the three categoricals are for transportation and out-of-district tuition.
Right.
And when we talked about our expenditures, and we talked about two items that are, that are growing above the, the Consumer Price Index, and in transportation's case, has been growing for, for several years now. You know, that, those are, those are the, some of the largest areas. And so we have a revenue source that, at the state level, the, the appropriation has, has stayed relatively flat the last two years. I think it was exactly flat this year. There was maybe a marginal increase last year. But it's staying flat at a time where the expenditures that are supposed to be associated with that are growing significantly. And again, that, there's an algebra equation there, you know, where, where one side is, is growing faster than the other, that leads to that, that proration number. And again, that's one where sort of all the costs throughout the state are kind of combined to kind of, kind of determine what that, that proration number would be. But what, what we've seen is we've seen that, that, that decrease over the last several years, really. And, and the, you know, the, the part that I, again, I think is a tier-two district is a little challenging, is that EBF continues to, to be funded, and the state's made the commitment to, to the, the new money each year for EBF. But that's really going to a much smaller subject, subset of districts. You know, that's going to your tier ones. And, and again, in some cases, you know, even, you know, there's, there's a wide variety in what districts are, are receiving from that. The categoricals go, go to every district. And so you've got a situation where one source of revenue that's going to all districts is, is sort of stable. And, and again, that, that's creating that, that proration. And then you have another source that, that is kind of, you know, has some, some significant discrepancies. You have some, so you have some districts that, that are making out pretty well with that, that trade-off. And then there's some districts that, that are kind of struggling. And again, as a, as a tier-two, we're one that isn't receiving a lot of EBF, is, is, you know, maybe breaking even or, or staying about flat with the categoricals. But then we've got this tier-two designation that shows that there's a, a demonstrated need at the state level for additional funding. So it is a tough situation.
And then to that point, slide thirteen, because you're kind of reading my mind there. So remind me again what CPI was last year that we were able to levy on operating? Because we kept flat, not operating, like we told our, our community, we would. But what were we able to levy on operating?
Yeah, great, great question. So the, the two, the sort of most relevant CPI numbers right now, three-point-four percent it was what was associated with last year's levy. This year's levy will be two-point-nine percent. And then again, we're about halfway now through the twenty-five calendar year. Again, it looks like CPI is kind of settling into that two-and-a-half to, to three percent range for next year as well.
And I like to point out, I mean, because our, our property taxes is our la- largest source of revenue, and we are proper capped at CPI. And I think it's important for the community to realize how some of these expenses go up. Transportation, eight percent, health, healthcare, six percent, electricity, twenty-three percent. I mean, and then we get prorated as well on some of the reimbursement. And so it is constantly a juggling act. And, oh, one other question before I wrap up. The eight-hundred percent, the, the, why is the stress on the grid? What is the reason for that? Is that because of the data centers up ideal?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and we could have another presentation all on that. Last Monday, on the Naperville side of town, there was about a five-hour presentation on, on the, the future of, of the grid and, and future of electricity in this area. So that's a charge that comes from PJM. PJM is sort of the, the super grid, if you will. You know, it is, includes several states kind of throughout the, the northeast, up into the, the Chicago Midwest area. So that's a charge that they're passing on to every electric, electricity user throughout several states.
Okay.
So, so that's passed on directly to ComEd from, from PJM. Again, it's nothing, it's nothing direct with our usage. It's not, you know, Indian Prairie, you use a lot of electricity, or you, you have a, you know, you, you have a high load at, at certain times when, when demand is higher, the greater stress. It's nothing with us specifically. It's, it's literally a rate that's being applied to, to a significant amount of electric users throughout the country. We're not as, we're not exposed to it yet with Naperville, because Naperville owns a, owns a, a share of a coal-powered plant. And so there is that charge, but then because the power plant is producing electricity, they become kind of the beneficiary of that, and there's, there's a break-even.
Okay.
The nature of the charge, though, is, to your point, is tied to concerns about the, the stability and reliability of the grid. It's the, it's how PJM effectively ensures that there's some surplus generation or backup generation available for peak hours.
So bottom line, with all the, you know, our adequate funding level, the fact that we kept taxes flat on the non-operating side, lower proration, higher cost on so many of these things, the fact that we came in and balanced the budget. Thank you.
Ms. Gents?
I want to start by echoing my, my fellow board members and thanking you. None of this is ever an easy job. And slide four really does speak to frankly, the importance of what you, you do and the difference that it makes really in the entire district. I just had a couple questions, more clarifications. On slide 13, could you just remind me and possibly the community what the increase in transportation is consistently made of?
Yeah, so, so that, so, so a significant portion of it over the last several years has been, has been wages and employee benefits. So, you know, again, similar to what we've seen with specifically our classified union as far as just getting caught up with some minimum wage increases that have occurred over the past several years. Increasing employee benefit costs, there's been some significant wage increases there. The, the transportation and, and the school bus industry, I think, has been, been uniquely hit just because of the nature of who they compete with. They compete with Amazon. They compete with, you know, they, they compete with other home delivery sort of, sort of things that have, that have grown in use over the, that time as well. You know, it used to be that if you had a CDL license or were, you know, able to drive large trucks, heavy machinery, you know, your, your choices were to, to, to drive cross-country and, you know, be on the road and, and kind of live that life. And now you can, you can work for Amazon and, and work a pretty traditional nine-to-five schedule. And so, so that's, that, that is a reality of the, the, the school bus industry is that we're kind of competing with that, again, with, with the Amazon model in particular. You know, the, similar costs when, when we talk about fuel costs. Again, that's a cost that I think when you go to fill up your own car, it's, it's kind of risen above inflation. And so, that would be another significant cost driver in there as well. But, but definitely the majority is, is that, that wage component.
Okay, yeah, that makes total sense and something I didn't even think of. I might be partially to blame for the Amazon, need for Amazon drivers. But you're, you were saying you think that will maybe level out more next year where we won't at least see?
We're optimistic, yeah. So, we're on a, we're on a one, we're on a one-year renewal basis. That we, we just have a contract out through next fiscal year. So, we don't, we, we will probably start negotiating the next contract here and probably shortly after the first day of school and to get ready for next year. You know, I think just in, in kind of doing some market comparisons and comparing with other districts, we're, we're optimistic that, that this may be the last of the significant increases.
Okay, no, that's, that's great, thank you so much. I know it's, it's hard to factor all of this in and figure all of it out, especially with the big unknowns, with the funding. That was actually my big question. So, just a big thank you again for, despite the funding issues we always have, you helping to make it work and coming out with a balanced budget.
Ms. Jane?
I love my board members, they ask such good questions. Again, I, I'm just, I just feel like I have to say that even in a stable environment, the juggling act that Board Member Rising used that phrase, I like that phrase. The juggling act in terms of all the variables that are at play and, and keeping a balanced budget is so complex. And given the environment we are in to have, to have such a presentation with a balanced budget is, is, I think remarkable. And for me, slide number six really is what we're always, I, I'm looking for. I know my board members are, that we are continuing our programming the best we can with the exception of the program Board Member Deming identified. So, I, I think that's pretty remarkable, especially two weeks ago having funds frozen and now they're not frozen. I mean, it's important to remind ourselves that the kind of environment that we are in and the uncertainty that we are in. And hence, the slide that shows our fund balance and the reasoning behind it as to why we're at 34.4% and why that cushion is needed in this environment, I think is really important to keep in mind. And you've done a really great job in making us understand that. I also appreciate the explanation about the electricity increase and the complexity around it. I hope we are in the future going to be able to find ways to become more efficient and be in a position to explore. And so, I, I don't know if today's that day to talk about what could be those possible efficiencies that we explore, but I, I hope in the future we'll be in a position to do that.
Yeah, I, and I'll just, just make that comment because I, I, you know, we did talk about a lot of the work we've done this summer and, and started this summer. But I don't want to give the impression that we just started thinking about this, this summer. You know, we've, we've really had that energy efficiency focus for, for several years. And I think we've presented each summer on, on a handful of capital projects that really had that, that efficiency of, of systems in mind. So, so the LED lighting was kind of the, the big piece and, and maybe the lowest hanging fruit that we had to take care of. And we are in one of the rooms that is, has the LED lighting now. Thank you for pointing that out, Dr. Tally. We went from, I think we, we started this summer with maybe two rooms in the district that had LED lighting to, that we've kind of piloted last year. And we're, we're getting caught up really quick. So, yeah, I, I don't want to make it sound like this was something that, that we, that we just kind of thought of in the last year or two. It, it is something that, that, that's been a focus. Outside of the, the building operations side, but talking about transportation, I'll point out, you know, we are, when we did our boundary changes a couple of years ago, we saw a 19% reduction in miles driven. So, again, a real significant testament to, to trying to operate, operate efficiently. And, you know, our, our lens has always been that that's what's good for the bottom line is, is generally is good for the environment when it comes to some of those sustainability initiatives. I think we believe that, you know, that there's plenty of viable avenues through, through, on the operations side where, where there is a return on investment. So, that continues to be our focus. There is some other projects to, to your point that I think we're, we're working on and, and starting to think about for next summer. And yeah, today's probably not the, the right night, but hopefully pretty soon.
I totally get that, yeah.
We do, we do hope in September, when we present our building operations overview, to have some additional projects in, in line for next summer.
I would just add, in our facility plan, there are two pages that talk about our sustainability. So, if, I think it may be pages, could be off on this 23 and 24, but two full pages about our sustainability.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And I also am excited to see how we'll use our 12 million with technology and to see how, you know, because I know Mr. Mack and his team have been talking about that, about what, what, what's needed. And I, I do look forward to hearing more about that. So, but thank you.
Thanks.
So, thank you. I, since we're talking about the 12.1 million transfer for technology, I, I just want to repeat that, and you brought it up, that that's not a sustainable model for funding those ongoing expenses. It's like a one-time, over many, many, many years, we've caught, we've had more money flow into our fund balance than we need. Or we want to keep that fund balance at a certain point so that we have enough to cover our district in case of financial pressures from the federal, state, or even local government. But it's like you, you do walk a fine line of wanting to keep it in a certain range and stay in good status with the state. But it's not something that we're going to be transferring or able to transfer 12 million out every year or every five years. It's, it's, I mean, our budget is within 200,000, right, of balance? So, it's not like we're generating millions of dollars every year that we put into that fund balance reserve.
That, that said very well, yes.
Okay. Also, I know we talked a lot about electricity and I asked the questions ahead of time because I saw that jump out at me. So, the 800% ComEd bump is aimed at Aurora, Aurora electricity. So, Naperville isn't getting hit with that because of the private company they have.
That's correct for, for the next year. So, so right now, Naperville electric prices are a little, are lower than ComEd, they're a little more stable. But, but again, I think we're at a really unique point, again, in both communities where, where looking to the future, I think, I think the only thing that's known is that there's, there's some unknowns on, on what are, you know, what electricity prices are going to look like in the future. I think that the best thing we can do is to use as, use as little electricity as possible, start there. And again, that, that's a lot of the work we're doing.
Well, and so, the 23% is primarily coming from Aurora's?
Yeah, the, yes, the actual budget increase is primarily the Aurora schools, yes.
And I, I know that, I know personally, and I know several of my board members have also probably been driving everybody crazy like every single month. Like, what's our state and federal funding look like? I mean, how much are we not getting or how much are we getting? And so, I think we were all breathing a sigh of relief with the latest round of hearing that funding has been released. Although, we were being reassured a bit that maybe we only were going to be impacted by $600,000 in grant money. So, I mean, it was like a, a continuous discussion behind the scenes of all of us trying to find out, you know, how we might be impacted by that. So, we're really hoping that's a stable view now from, at both, on all sides. Also, on transportation, that 8%, like, we've had very significant increases the last couple of years and primarily because, and we had a major shortage of bus drivers. So, that they had to increase that wage rate significantly to bring in people to, to drive our buses and.
Yeah, yeah, good point. And that's one thing I, I could have mentioned to, to Board Member again. One, one of the, the things that makes us cautiously optimistic that, that some of these, these increases, a large increase are subsiding is, you know, our, our vendor for student is, is under a union agreement. So, we do know the terms of those. And, and so, we're able to generally forecast a little bit off of that. And then we are projected to have a full crew for the first day of school. So, so we're really, you know, again, it's been, it's been years in the making, but we do finally feel like we're, we're starting to, to, to turn it around on, on, on transportation. But, but as Dr. Tally mentioned in his, his opening comments, I, you know, I do want to give a lot of credit to, to the transportation team, both our team internally as well as for student. Because in spite of all that, we, we still do maintain a very high on-time percentage. You know, I, I think the, the safety record speaks for itself as well. And so, we're, you know, we, we've been very satisfied with the service and, and the operations. You know, it's, it's just when it comes to cost where we've had some challenges.
Yeah, but even so, I mean, if I recall, we were way high in double digits the last year at least, maybe two years. And, but comparing that to other district increases across the area, it was significantly lower. So, there was tough negotiations going on to get to those price points. But, I mean, at some point, though, we had even Ron possibly going to drive a bus because of shortages, right? So, I'm very happy that that's stabilizing.
Yeah, we're, again, we, we do feel like we're in a better position to, to start this school year than, than we've been over the, the past several and probably, probably even going back before COVID.
Yeah. Well, I, I, did anyone have?
I was just wondering, did, did, were, were we at, we were at cap capacity the last year, weren't we? Were, weren't we good with?
At the end of the year, at the end of the year, we were. I think we still had some openings at the, at the beginning of the year. Again, we're, we're trying to staff not just for, for every route, but also ensuring that there's some in reserve for, you know, substitutes and things. And also, we want to make sure that we can, if possible, have the availability to run our, run our full charters and, and sort of midday activities, field trips, things like that. No one likes having to leave the zoo a little early because, because we got to get back to run a traditional route, right? So, we want to make sure that there's enough capacity for all those things as well. And I think we're, we're, again, as, as close as we've been in, in a long time.
Thank you, thank you.
We were also working on changing the certification for bus drivers, is that progressing or?
It was, it was, we were able to modify it a little bit so that the bus driver license is a little bit different than what you would get if you wanted to be a, a truck driver or something of that nature. So, yes, they can now not, they will not use this as a stepping stone to become a license for a truck driver.
Right, because they had to pass even a mechanics test, like fixing the equipment or whatever. So, it's like, okay, so that, that's all good. I, I appreciate all the work that goes into putting the budget together with all of the changes that are going on. And I also appreciate all the hard work that's done on the Safer Stronger 204. And in fact, I think this week I'm going to get to see five tours of different schools and the work that has been done this summer because the principals are all extremely excited and proud of all the work that's been happening. So, I'm very interested in seeing that. So, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And, you know, Allison or Ms. Fostick has update?
So, in late June, Lori got an email from Isaac Warren, who's the Director of Digital Communication for IASB, about the podcast that he hosts called Inside IASB. And he was looking for some representation or someone to interview to discuss how an idea from the Joint Annual Conference was implemented in one's district. And so, for this particular episode, he was interested in learning about Student Voice because he had heard from some higher-ups at IASB about the great success so far of us being able to incorporate some Student Voice. So, Lori passed that along to me and I just recorded that with him last week. So, that will be out at the end of September. But it was exciting and it was reinvigorating to remember that we were just getting, really getting rolling with our Student Advisory Committee and students' representation at, you know, at board meetings. When we went to the Joint Annual Conference meeting in 2022 and got to go to a presentation by Oswego's District 308 and hear from their student ambassadors and really get a picture of what that looked like so then we could connect with them, have our students meet virtually, share ideas, and how we really learned from that. So, we had a good time chatting, it was my first podcast ever. So, it was a little nerve-wracking, but kind of exciting. But that will probably be out sometime late September as he has a series of these leading up to conference in November.
Very cool.
It was fun, yes.
All right, Mr. Rising?
I do have a couple of things and I apologize, I didn't let you know ahead of time. So, I just wanted to let the board know, I did submit my application for an IASB officer on Friday. I sent all that to Lori, but I will send it to all of you. I got it to her the day I sent it to IASB, which was Friday. Something you may be seeing from me, and I'm just giving you the heads up now, as the DuPage Division Director now, I am probably going to start to send out quarterly updates to all the presidents in DuPage County or DuPage Division because I think there's been a lack of transparency and understanding of what the DuPage Executive Board does and quite frankly, what the directors at the state level do. And, you know, and again, I'm not blaming it on former leadership in DuPage Division, but I just think it's something that everybody is kind of lacking that insight. Ironically, that was one of my goals because as an officer, you have to put three goals. And that was one of the things that I think we should be doing absolutely at the division level, but the state level too. Because, you know, there's what, 850 districts, seven, there's 5,600 school board members in the state of Illinois and they have no idea what the division directors do at the state level, no clue. Like, I've been a board member for how long and I don't, didn't know what they do. So, so that is one of the things that I hope to accomplish. And then the last thing, which just happened within the last two weeks, Kimberly Small from IASB and Sarah Miller, who's in charge of the advocacy at the state level for legislators, they asked me if I would sit on the, and this is, Matt, this is kind of for you too. They asked if I would sit on ISB's Professional Review Panel, which looks at evidence-based funding. So, I'll be sitting on that panel with Tony Sanders, a lot of state legislators. So I'll be sitting on that panel with Tony Sanders, a lot of state legislators in the state. Kimberly and Sarah thought it would be great since we are one of those tier-two districts that kind of has been in a weird awkward position through evidence-based funding, that I sit on there and they know I can hold my ground to other legislators. So, so I will let you know. I, I'm assuming it's just a tap on the shoulder, fill out an application, which I had to do and I'm on the committee, but I haven't heard any feedback yet. So, but just wanted to let you know that, so.
Yeah, it's good to have representation on that board for sure.
Yeah.
Remind everybody what the process is for the elections for the IASB.
Oh, for the officers. So all the 21 divisions, the directors are getting together in August, the end of August, and kind of doing a lot of stuff as it relates to the conference in November and having some constitutional discussions and things like that. Apparently they're going to interview us at that conference. It's a weekend conference and so I'll be attending that on the weekend and I guess they interview us there and then they make their recommendations. I mean, I think they let.
Who's they?
The committee, that's the officer committee. So the person that leads it is Simon, who's the past president, which actually a couple of years ago, he encouraged me on the side to run. So hopefully that's a good sign. But I don't know or have any purview of how many people are applying for an officer position. I did put in for VP because I reached out to Tracy, who's the current VP, and she was going to put in for president. And I figured they will probably automatically give it to her just because she's been vice president. So, but they'll make the recommendations at, basically at the delegate assembly of who the next officers are. So, but I'm sure I'll find out before then and I'll let you know.
Interestingly, we found out that the president of IASB for quite a number of years has been from a district that is teeny tiny, like 400 students.
The current, the current president of IASB is from a district that is 350 students. The vice president is at a unit district that is 378 students. The past president is from a district that's 1,000 students. They haven't had an officer that is from a large district, and a large district is considered over 3,500 students. That's a large district. They haven't had an officer since 2011 that has been from a district that has more than 3,500 students. So.
I think that's problematic, honestly.
Yeah.
We'll see, we'll see what happens here. If anybody has any connections.
You can bet I put that in my letter too. But, but truly, I put it in there meaning that we aren't, like we all handle the same things. We all deal with the same challenges and struggles and things like that. But there's this perception of we want to all be valued equally across the state, but the representation at the officer level hasn't represented that. So I made that one of my points in my letter.
I, I just think there should be a distribution of different, yeah, and we haven't seen that in a long time.
Long time.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.